Okay, Selectmen's Meeting for October 1st, 6:33 PM. Mr. Steinhardt, Mr. Moguln, and Mr. Fox in attendance. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Mr. Dede will be joining us very shortly. He's in Root. Before we begin the meeting, we did have an individual that served as a reserve police officer and a constable, Leonard Seibert. His brother Murt was a longtime DPW director, and Seibert's a longtime family. So if we could have a moment of silence for Leonard Seibert, please. Thank you.
I'll see that one so I can find him.
Okay, we've got glasses. The first thing we're going to do is open it up to public comments. That's for anybody that's not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board. This would be your opportunity to do that. I'd ask that you please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to make a statement on public comments?
Hi, I'm Kathy Davis, 12 Breiten Drive. I'm Vice President of the Congonmon Heights Association. We own 106 Berkshire Ave. It's been deemed a non-conforming build with a lot. The town has continued to tax our nonprofit association as such. This is very draining on our little neighborhood association, so we decided to sell this property. After many delays, such as a sewer that was never hooked up, which we were billed for, a title issue, and now an encroachment by the town where the street was repaved, we have finally got a contract to sell to the land. The buyer and his attorney state the title insurance company will not issue a title policy with the encroachment on the property for over six months and over $1,000 in attorney's fees. We are no longer, we are no closer to getting this resolved. Our attorney sent letters to the town. We've called the town many times, and our president has visited the town hall and has probably spoken to some of you and to Randy Brown. Randy Brown has requested information from the surveyor, Mr. Silvany. Mr. Silvany has not returned Mr. Brown's calls, our calls, our realtor's calls, and our attorney's calls, but I've been advised tonight that he finally was reached by some folks with the town today. When I spoke to Mr. Brown and asked that we get another surveyor, he thought that might be a good idea until I found myself. However, Mr. Brown stated that he had no authority to hire a surveyor. I, that's why we're here tonight, is because I was told that if I got on the agenda for tonight's meeting to ask the Select Board to authorize hiring another surveyor, that we would have that right tonight to be on the agenda. We were not granted that request to be on the agenda, so I'm here under public comments. Joining me here tonight are a few of the board members, as well as our President Roger Cataldo, to plead to the town to authorize payment for a survey right away so we don't lose our buyer. Your lack of attention to this matter over six months, together with your encroachment on our property, has caused us to incur attorney's fees and prevent this land from being marketable. But somehow you expect us to keep paying the taxes on something that we cannot even sell because of your negligence. We are beyond frustrated. We respectfully ask the town to do the right thing and help us get this resolved as soon as possible. And I know that maybe Mr. Silvany has been, has finally been reached by phone call, but he is not someone that works very fast and now fast is needed. Six months has passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment under public comments? All right. All right, then. Mike, I see that we have some visitors here. Would you like to make the introductions as Chairman of the?
Well, as you said.
So at the last meeting, this is our library director, Lynn.
Lynn.
And Lynn can go up in there.
Yeah, and I'd like to introduce Paige Phillips. She is our new children's librarian taking over after Joanne Judd's retirement. And we have a new staff member today. She's running behind at the library. Heather Dunphy is our new Assistant Director. Yeah, so between myself, we have two new staff as well. So we're just working on getting everybody used to everything at the library and introducing them to the townspeople and doing some of that.
And everything's going good?
So far, so good, yes.
All right, good. Well, you have an open invitation anytime if you'd like to stop by or have a problem or any issue. You do have elected library commissioners, but you can also work through them or come to us, and we'd be happy to help you.
My, Lynn and I talk weekly.
Probably our building and grounds talk on a regular basis.
Been a busy couple of weeks, but we're out and running. I'm very confident that we've got great new staff, and we're excited to see where things go.
Good. All right.
Visit the library anytime that it's open.
I, you know, now that my daughter is...
Aged up.
Aged up. I don't seem to attend the libraries often as I did, Mike, you know.
Another member donate ice cream cone coupons for the summer reading phone.
That's just so I don't have to go to the library. That's how that's going.
It's a fair trade.
He's making good on overdue books.
We do a gift basket every year, Mike. All right, no, it was good meeting both of you, and if somebody else shows up, we'll say hello to them too. But we didn't want to keep you here all night long, but we appreciate you coming by.
Thank you.
And meeting you. Okay, thank you very much.
Lovely to see you again.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
All right. The first thing we have is the payables warrant number 2009B dated 9/23/19 in the amount of $1,081,304.54. Payable warrants 2010B dated 9/25/19 in the amount of $4,533.46. Payroll warrant number 2007 dated 9/30/19 in the amount of $228,659.93. Next thing I have is minutes of 9/319.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Minutes of...
Are they here?
There's, there's...
I was looking for them.
Right.
I think Kathy here.
Oh, she's here.
Come back again.
Come back in.
This is Heather Dunphy.
How you doing, Heather?
Hi, Heather.
She just discovered what a maze this place can be, but we're here. Oh, my goodness. Made it.
It's, right, right. Well, this is a former school, so there is, it is a maze.
All the hallways look the same. We found that out.
Right, right. You were not the first person to get lost in this building.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, so...
It's beautiful though. Everything's nice and clean and modern and bright. We both come from small-town libraries, so we're amazed that...
Okay.
...town offices are open 8:30 to 4:30, and you don't have to track somebody down Monday nights from 5:00 to 7:00. It's a blessing.
What town are you from?
Custodian cleans you.
I was, I was in West Hampton last, and Heather comes from Huntington.
Huntington?
And every day you come into work, the custodians already cleaned it?
Yes, they clean every night.
They really do.
Not once have we done it ourselves, so it's nice. Oh, my gosh.
If you guys want to take over some of those responsibilities, let us know. That's fine. We can adjust. I mean, we're good about that.
You might be going to union negotiations.
Yeah, yeah.
Better encourage community.
Oh, yeah. Don't worry about that. So you're actually...
This is the management team.
Yeah. I'm sorry I came late, but, so you're the director?
Yes.
Assistant Director.
Assistant Director?
She's the Director, she's the Assistant Director. And the child librarian suddenly...
No, that's fine, but longevity-wise, we shouldn't have to deal with anything for quite a while.
There you go.
Though I'm thrilled, right? I'm just saying that just, the last few years...
That was slick.
Last few years, we've been putting, been redoing, it's like the police, you know, they get their three best years when they go. That's how the library's been for the last five, six, seven years, right? We've gone through a few directors for retirement, so this is wonderful.
Hey, I got a long way to go.
That's what I'm getting at nicely. What I'm saying is, I'm sure I'm breaking some laws on this.
Stop while you were at it. You were ahead. Now he's sitting bottom and continues to do.
Well, the elder statesman of the board may have to weigh in.
Ah, okay. Let's move on.
The elder statesman of the board is time to move on.
May very well retire before any of us, so, anyways.
And with that...
Yes, good night.
Thank you for coming by.
Yep.
That's great.
All right, yes, we did find the minutes for 9/3, so we've made a motion. We've accepted it. Minutes of 9/17/19.
Sorry, I'll make that motion, so.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended? Is there a second?
Second to that motion.
Ah.
I'm going to hang on to one for a minute.
Okay.
Make that amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay.
You can just write it out there if you'd like.
That's what I'm doing.
All right, let's go right to the action folder, because I don't believe we have anybody else on the...
Cindy, can I see the 9/3 when we get a chance? I thought that was the one that I already voted.
I just printed out a sap because they weren't in here.
That's it?
Yeah, and I'll work on this other thing, continue.
Okay, we're going to the action folder. 1A is from Chief Bishop. It's about a donation from an individual for $25 to the Southwick Police Citizens Police Account, and we need to accept that donation from Louis Alberti.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next 2A is a letter from the Board of Health. It's from Tom Fitzgerald. "After 20 years of service to the Town of Southwick, I'm offering my letter of retirement effective November 1st, 2019. The Board of Health has offered, and I have accepted their offer to remain in my present position on a per diem basis until a qualified applicant can be hired. I appreciate the cooperation of your board over the period. Trust that my successor will enjoy the same. Meantime, I'll continue to serve the people of Southwick as my career winds down." Tom Fitzgerald, Director of Southwick Board of Health.
So, Mr. Chairman, in order for that to happen, because he is retiring, I had to petition the Retirement Board to approve that so that he can work after he retires under that 960-hour a year limit.
Yep.
So that has gone to the Retirement Board to be acted on at the end of this month along with his retirement, which is the fourth Thursday of each month.
Okay.
So that's separate from the other actions that you and I took that we could talk about later on to old business or bring it up now, whichever you prefer.
Why don't we take it under old business?
Okay.
And do we need any motion on this at this time, though?
No, because there is appointing authority. He's just notifying you.
Okay. And at some point, we need to have a certificate of appreciation.
Right, and there's also going to be a function at the end of this month that Cindy and Mrs. Nielsen hired.
Oh, great, great. All right, 3A is from the American Red Cross that they'll no longer be doing blood drives here at Town Hall, and they thank us for all the years that we've worked with them. But unfortunately, they're going in a different direction. That's FYI. 4A is from DPW Director Randy Brown. It's concerning winter road salt. As you know, we are lucky to have that new salt shed, and Randy wants to fill it up, but the budget can only fill it so far, so he wants to deficit spend for fiscal '20 on the salt budget by approximately $67,000, if I read this correct. And this is something we did last year because we got a pretty good rate on the salt.
Well, you also want to make sure you have an adequate supply of it so that if you buy it piecemeal, you run the risk of not having it in time.
Right, and especially if we have a bad winter...
And now you have a facility that will more than handle both the quantity of it and secure and keep it dry.
Okay, so I need someone to make a motion to approve the deficit spending for FY '20 for the salt budget in approximately the amount of $67,000.
So move.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll sign it to make it official.
Thank you.
All right, 5A is the Sewer Rate Relief Fund for fiscal 2020, and Carl?
Yeah, that's just our annual one. We don't get a lot out of it, but it is something that we filed, so the board needs to sign up on it so we can submit it this week to the Mass DLR.
Okay, so a motion to accept or a motion to file?
Motion to approve and file the grant request. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
So there's signing sheets, lines for all of you?
I will begin the process and pass it over to Mrs. Moguln.
You'll see it's been signed up by the other... And again, the most we ever got on this program is about $38,000, but there was a lot more money appropriated by the state for our share, so it's about $1,000 to $1,500 a year, which goes into the sewer.
All right, 6A is concerning the Community Block Grant for the $550,000 that we were awarded due to the great work of Mr. Dede and others, and I would need a motion to ratify the fact that I signed it as Chairman.
Let's make you sweat. I'll make you.
Dede?
You sweating, don't you? What are you doing now? I'm sorry. Second that, sweat.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, 7A, this is to approve Vanish, who is our new Southwick Police Department Safety Officer, as the LEPC member.
So move.
Oh, I'll gladly second that.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right.
You'd be a great team player down there.
All right, and while you're in such a giving mood, approve Officer Mark Siegel, Southwick Police Department, as the alternate LEPC member.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That's, that's great.
You either signed or you're all set with that.
We're all set with that, you know? Okay, this is 9A, and this is concerning LEPC, but I would like to table this at this time. I don't know if this individual is still an employee.
I have no idea why that was put in your folder, but no, the individual is no longer. I called up, he's not there, and the new person has not gone back to me to indicate whether or not he'll be staying there, whether or not he could be, fulfill that role.
Right, because they...
Because of the Chairman of the LEPC, I am looking to fill that category.
Okay.
Local Emergency Planning Committee?
So that'll be...
That's your Chairman right there.
That'll be table?
New. 14 members.
All right, 10, 10.
Huge table top.
10A is from the Town of Southwick Park and Rec Commission. Subject is volunteer work at Wally Park. They have a volunteer, Bartlett Tree Experts, that would like to do some work at Wally Park, including pruning, mulching, removal of dead, broken branches, and watering of trees at the park to promote growth, vitality, and improve resistance to disease. So they're, and I believe they have a certificate of liability insurance, so they're asking us to approve volunteers to do that work.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, why don't we sign on here?
I'd like to have them to do that.
Yeah, it's very nice. Excellent.
All right, okay. Things are a little out of order now here, so I'm gonna, this is in your chair mail. So, can I put my chair mail in here? So let me see if I can get to it.
Which side do you want?
The first thing is from, on here is from Michelle Hill. Thanks, Doug, I found it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah. And this is concerning, she's saying that we currently do not have written guidelines regarding some of our benefits, and this is concerning retirees that leave and what the coverage they have under the plan once they retire. And this is a case where we have an employee that is going to continue working somewhere else where they have a benefit that we currently don't pay anything for.
And that's dental.
And that's dental, and if, if they choose to use that, can they basically come back? And then she gives us the pros and cons. Whatever's chosen will set precedent. The plan itself, it's no cost to the Town of Southwick. Tracking retirement, a retiree benefit activity does come with a cost to the town, but the CIO has said that it's just a minimal thing, so... It's a pleasure of the board.
Seems reasonable. After consulting with the CIO, the amount of time is extremely minimal to maintain their records for same, so I don't see an issue with it. If someone was able to offset some of their costs during employee post-retirement and then come back for, to take advantage of, of a plan that they're paying 100% of, and all we got to do is keep the record of it. I don't, I don't see a big deal to it.
It's a form of motion?
Sure.
Sure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll sign it.
Doug's happy, we're all happy.
No, I'm not happy till you're not.
All right. Okay. Cindy, there's that one.
Now, Bervio's. Interesting.
Okay. You want to...
Yeah, talk about it.
Okay.
What are you talking about?
This is...
It's in your chair mail.
It's in the chair mail. Anybody want to kind of give us the short version?
The short version is, it's a, it's a, basically a website and, and an app for your phone, and they scrape various calendars, including the town's calendar, and they can link to your personal calendar and put events and meetings on your calendar that you've pre-selected that you're interested in. So the library can have a site on Bervio where it puts your library events, Town Hall meetings, and, and so on. Other, other boards and committees that you can then sign up to be notified when they're having meetings. Other organizations in the town, including the school, could put also on Bervio, and it basically amalgamates the calendar. No work on the part of the town. It scrapes it from the website directly, so there's not an additional step of posting by our employees beyond what they're supposed to be doing already. No cost to the town to do it, no cost for the user to sign up to have it. Frankly, eventually, if they get enough critical mass, they'll sell advertising to local guys to advertise on the top of the webpage and on the app on your phone, so... I had spoken to Dennis Clark about it at one point, because I think we had seen this at MMA or someplace else, but, and then someone had asked me about it, Dennis had asked me about it, so I did follow up with the lady and spoke to her at length about it. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a cost to the town to sign up for this, and there is not. So it seems like a reasonable deal. There's not much we need to do. We don't, we just, I can just follow up with her and, and it, it's done.
There's no cost to residents either?
No. And they don't buy and sell your information, so they don't sell your name and phone number to their advertisers. They're just going to sell display advertising on their website at some point.
You going to form a motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm assuming we can bow out at any time.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Next thing I hear is approve Westfield Tech intern for DPW, and I don't...
No, you don't have anything on that because that had been, we had to do the research on that, and this is a situation where the individual's a high school person.
Yep.
And we would be having them work in our DPW deposit as an intern, and they would give us indemnification, and we would indemnify them across, across us, and it's sort of like the school internship program that we have in our high school, but this person would be then given a stipend through the Bay State Roads Program where the city of Westfield's technical agent, high school would then transfer that money to us.
Okay.
So it'd be no cost to us.
Yep.
And so I'm looking for the board to approve this on behalf of the DPW Director and the Supervisor so that they can have an intern in their department, like we have in some other departments, and this one will be paid through their tech high school.
Okay.
We have all the paperwork. We've got all the legal paperwork.
Okay, I was just...
Why didn't they go to Westfield? Or does Westfield already have one?
No, this is to work on a highway.
No, no, no.
They're trying to place people in, in experiences where they want.
I understood what you said. He's saying, does the city of Westfield also have an intern or interns?
I don't know.
Okay.
This is something that their...
Their Volk Tech?
Their Volk Tech does outreach to communities.
Okay.
Could also be a day from our town that goes to...
Well, that's what I was wondering, too. Yeah, exactly. Does a Southwick resident...
There was no name. There was nothing about residency.
It's the first step of the process, right? It's the first step of the process.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering if they would place a Southwick student.
Are you making that a condition?
No, I'm just asking if that is one of the considerations.
I had no, that was not mentioned.
Okay. All right, so we are just giving you approval to continue to research this or to go ahead with this?
No, because the high school's in session now. They've got to get these kids placed. They have a kid figured out who they want to put it up against. Yeah, but we don't.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it provided Russ gets more information than he would like.
Second.
Right.
All in favor?
Good luck, Russ.
Thank you.
Good. Because I know what you're saying, just kind of vague, like, you know.
I'm just asking.
Right.
All right, the next thing is, on the agenda is review of the tag sale permit. Okay. No, 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 we're not going to discuss. All right. An issue came up, and, and someone questioned something. I would like to just, as the elder member of the board, give you some background on this, that when I first got elected to a Board of Selectmen back in 1981...
Ta-da!
The chairperson, Mrs. Brown...
That was an old-time board.
I was in high school still.
Mrs. Brown, personally...
Fred was here.
Personally...
Fred was definitely here, yeah.
Made sure, she would go around the town to make sure there were no illegal tag sales going on.
You were, yeah.
To make sure every tag sale that was, had paid.
Right.
And to make sure of safety issues, anything, and also to make sure people only had, I believe at the time, I am getting older, it was twice a year you could have a tag sale at a location, okay? And that was done so you didn't have problems with neighbors, there weren't traffic issues, things like that.
Or de facto flea market.
Right. So that has always been the practice. Now, somewhere along the line, it used to be on the form. It was stated somewhere.
We go back to 1995.
Well, I go back further than that.
Right.
And somewhere along the line, that disappeared from the rules. And somewhere along the line, that disappeared from the rules. So, I would like to just say that I believe we have past precedent, that that is the way it's always been, I, I would like to see the application reflect that.
Then just vote to amend the current application to reflect it.
So, I would gladly accept the motion to amend this, to state that tag sales at a location are only allowed twice a year.
Now precedence, since I've been here, we've done three a year.
I, then, then we will do three, I wouldn't be pro-
That's my suggestion, just because we've always, I always taught three a year.
Can we promulgate a rule like that? Is that within our application?
This is your, you're revising the current application.
I understand that, but, and I don't mean to cause a furor, but there's gotta be a basis to, to have such a limit, and it, past practice is great, but if, and not that anyone would challenge you, but-
Probably a clerical, when they, when the forms are updated, probably just left off of it, so now we need to modernize this stuff now, and, because I remember this too, and I've been here thirty years, and it was only two, that's what I remember.
That's what I remember.
And it used to be a dollar a day, and you had to make sure the police were involved.
Right.
And then they would get the list every Friday afternoon about who was authorized to be there.
Correct.
So, so what happens is when you start to see things out there that seem to be beyond this, then you gotta go back and look at all the documentation, I don't know why it's not-
I understand, but my point is, how do you enforce it? So, if, if you're gonna send either the zoning enforcement officer, or code compliance officer, or police officer, he's gotta have a basis in law or fact to, to say, you can't have a tag sale this Sunday. Why? 'Cause in the town code, section this, that, and the other, can't do it. If, if it's on your application form, that's great, but I don't know that that behavior can't do it.
Town code, dog. That's a dollar amount in the town code, so if the permit isn't issued, then the dollar, then the amount hasn't been collected, so there isn't a permit. So, it is, it becomes a byline of regulation.
The town code is the last page.
Right, but I, you know-
And I, I read that briefly, but I didn't read through the whole code right to prepare for the-
Yeah, but, but I even, you know, I'm, I'm just, again, trying to go from memory.
Russ, I get it, I'm just trying to say that you, you can't set up a de facto rule of law by changing the form.
I believe there was a town meeting vote at some point that set this. I, I don't believe it was something done arbitrarily.
The only place I couldn't find anything about it in the minutes was in nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, I think you'd have to-
Something to the M M A.
Now, um-
I'm just wondering why-
We were just in the-
The M M A of Boston.
Yeah, we were just in the process of redoing ours, and she had asked if people had policies.
I think if you go, and, and, but how much time do we wanna spend on this? Um, if you go back, I can sw- almost tell you that in the seventies or early eighties, there was a town meeting vote that established that, you know?
You're right, that's why I'm all-
You know, that's, you know-
It's gotta be in the town-
Because I, again, Mrs. Brown was chairman, and she took it upon herself every weekend.
She went to the tag sales to shop, too.
Well, she, she went, drove, literally drove around the town to make sure there was no illegal, and I-
There's a lot of-
And I, I swear that there was a town meeting vote that's, that set it. But I mean, like Carl was saying, it, we've been doing this-
Thirty years, I've been doing this.
Yeah, right, I mean-
Never an issue up till now, and you've got some people that just wanna disregard.
Right.
And again, when you have more than multiple, that becomes a de facto flea market.
And that does get me nervous, because we've had, and I'm not gonna get into it, but there's probably things brewing that may end up being flea markets every weekend. And I, and I've stressed to that new business that came to town, you know, we don't do that, but, like you said, you go right back to this, it doesn't say you don't do that, you know? And I sure as hell don't want it every weekend.
Yeah, I, I, I just think Carl's correct, somewhere along the line, it, it was written right there and it just got removed, and I don't, you know? What's the pleasure of the board?
I have no, no objection to changing the form and, and setting a policy if we're, if we can do it, I just, how do you enforce it? And we may have to come back and go back to a town meeting at some point in the future to codify that, with an article that says that's what it is in the, in the town code book, and I'll research it tomorrow, but if you wanna put it on the form-
Should maybe release it as a press release?
No.
Of all the-
I think Doug's right, why don't we just put it back on the form?
Right.
Okay, and then we will do our research, you know, but we're not gonna spend thousands of dollars and a lot of time doing it, and if we-
Well, I don't think it needs to be that, if you're saying it was in the seventies, Mr.-
I, it was-
We, we can get all the annual town reports, seventies and eighties.
Right.
And Cindy can look at them in another, another office, and she'll just go through all those votes, and we'll find it.
If, if, right, and if we can't find it-
Tomorrow's news.
And we have to have some sort of regulation established at a town meeting, we'll do it. Good motion?
That's the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Yes.
Motion for Cindy to go back further?
No, no, we're gonna change-
He had to put it on the form.
Change the form, and then we have time, we have to look in there, yeah.
It's on the tape.
Alright, that's all I see under action, we're going to old business, uh, dates to remember, the animal parade is coming up. We're in October, October twentieth, rain date is ten twenty-seven, uh, I believe it's one P M, Joe?
Sure.
And it's from, uh, uh, I B S to town hall.
Yep.
Uh, we'd love to see people turn out, we'd love to see a lot of people bring their animals down, this is a fundraiser for the, um, Pulverari Animal Shelter. And it was a great success last year, uh, except for the three guys that were doing maintenance at the end of parade.
They're doing maintenance again.
I believe Mr. Pulverari did say something about he was getting another-
Is that with the three of you in the jumpsuits with the wheelbarrow shoveling up after the animal?
Different outfits this year, I'm told.
Different outfits.
Different outfits.
One size fits most, they said.
Fits most.
They lie.
Most, they lie, yeah. Yeah, I'll try not to be on my phone as much.
Alright, Veterans Day Parade also is coming up quick, it's gonna be, um, uh, V F W is in charge, it, it's actually gonna be on the eleventh this year, Monday, the eleventh. Uh, so that'll be kicking off, uh, going from approximately the summer house to the congregational church, uh, where Town Green is. We have the special municipal employee update, uh, from town council, did everybody get a chance to read that?
Yeah, you asked at the last meeting, did that meet with your expectations on him reviewing that, or?
It's a non-answer, the way I read it. The answer is you need to talk about the specifics of each particular one with council, or they would have to avail themselves of the ethics commission. If I read it right.
Yeah, the, the way I read it is, is the illness would be placed on, uh, the individuals to, uh, address if they thought that they had any potential conflicts of interest.
So then we don't need to do anything, 'cause we usually move to-
We update it, we review it each year and update it, like this year, we took off the plumbing inspector, put the new one on there.
Right, but the other boards and commissions, we would have to move them to S and Es, but now we're not gonna do that, so we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, you either decide to, to keep each individual board on there, or it takes boards off of there, and then it goes from there. So it's a whole board issue.
Yes, no?
I don't know, I think it's, like you said, I mean, you're, you're not, so everyone's off.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll accept those that are statutorily covered, which is this board.
Right.
Until we get to ten thousand, then we're out.
We're out, great.
But other boards and commissions are, we would move to appoint them as special municipal employees each year.
Right.
If we don't do it, because the attorney says it's our decision, then we just don't make that motion, so we don't really, the attorneys emailed me, says we just take no action and they would not be special municipal employees, which was the whole point of this whole-
They stay on there until, until you vote to take them off.
Well, you've been doing this longer than me, I-
We've been doing this each year, each year the board's been voting on this.
To appoint them as special municipal employees, so my point is, if you don't vote to make them special municipal employees, that's-
Then they're all done after that year.
Then they're not, but I, I see your point, if you want us to vote to have them not be.
Well, you just review, you amend the form, that's all, 'cause then we-
And they have more than one tag sale a year?
Three.
Actually, you have, you have about six or seven boards on it, I mean, you got twenty-three boards.
So we could accept the motion to amend the form, and that would satisfy-
Whichever board you want to be on there to be designated. It's an annual review, you don't-
So, select board would be on there?
By statute.
Well, yeah, you're not listed on it, 'cause you're automatic.
Right, alright.
Lower, lower, you're automatic.
So to see the Community Preservation Committee, correct? South Lake Emergency Management, Conservation, Finance, South Oak Town, Grammar, Regional School District, Sewer Implamation Committee, ah, forget them, Agriculture Commission, Park and Rec, and I guess the Board of Health, right? So they're-
They would be up to, they would handle their own-
Right.
Issues, you know?
Right.
And, and again, not to be repetitive, I think that we, we all take an ethics test every two years, we have to make sure that we understand what the laws are, and this, this is transparency.
So you wanna make a motion to not put them on, they'll do it by themselves?
Right.
Or just leave it alone, or board by board?
Right. I'll make the motion not to, it just, this goes away, and they're all responsible for their own things if they're on it, good enough, I don't know.
Yep.
That's where we're headed, right?
That's where we're headed.
The next year we don't even bring it up, it doesn't-
Right.
We get recycled through.
Right. I'll second it.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All赞成.
One cent, alright.
I guess, I mean-
Okay, well, we, we've, I know, we've gone back and forth over it, and now it's, we've been, Department Head Goals and Objectives, do we wanna go over that? Tonight?
Ah, you've had the form for, since August, you could do that, or I have a few that I'm gonna add to each of them, but I was just gonna incorporate your stuff.
Right, I, I just see Fred sitting there, and, you know, there's a couple of things that I wanted to, uh, add and see if the board, you know, um, two, two quick ones if you want it, uh-
That's, you just pick who you, which person you wanna add it to.
Well, Chief Bishop, just a quick one, I, I, uh, community outreach, you know, I, I'd kinda like to s- see some, uh, where we're at, you know, I mean, we've put in money for community outreach, and I'm not sure what programs have transpired. So, that would be one of them, and then the other one is, you know, kind of a pet peeve with me, and that would be under, uh, Randy Brown, uh, the transfer station. I'd like to-
Are those weeds growing back again, is it that time of year? Jesus, we just bought the trailer Ross Somy gone.
You know, I, I, you know-
Front page news again, weeds at the transfer station.
We, we just-
Actually, they want the road paved, I, I was sitting at the cemetery the other day-
Yeah.
And I don't know, three different people, when you gonna pave the road to the transfer station?
It, I, it's-
It's the driver.
That's, I said never, let them go slow.
Right, but it's, it's the fact that it's a transfer station, not a-
I didn't say dump, I said transfer station twice.
Well, I know, but I mean, I've been to other transfer stations, and-
I know, you live in the past, I get it, and they're beautiful, and the, the seagulls are cleaner, I know, and you see the beach in the distance, I get it.
Uh, but the fact of the matter, we have a high turnover, and we have different people there, and I think-
Well, cars come and go, it's a high turnover, yes, they empty those racks and then move on.
direction on what they're required to do on a daily basis. You know, and I don't think it's asking too much to keep it-
You're absolutely right.
Presentable.
It's, it's comical that it comes up every year.
Okay.
It's the season.
Those were the only two that I mentioned quickly for tonight.
You know, I think the fantastic-
Does the board concur with you?
Totally.
I really think that now that Russ's business is slowing down a little bit 'cause of the seasons, that I'd like to make a motion that Russ Fox spends a day at the transfer station.
I would.
Seriously.
Clean it up.
I don't know what you're cleaning, but just like I spent the day in the secretary's office, and, you know, and, and that other department over there, I think you should spend a day with them, you don't have to wear the orange jumpsuit. Um, and just, just to get a grasp of what does and doesn't happen there, to maybe help you understand why some weeds may grow and maybe don't grow, and, you know, why that wasn't picked up, and I knew you were coming Saturday at two every day, every week. You probably should spend a di- you know, I wanna go patch potholes, and I just never seem to find the time.
I'm waiting for the equipment.
When that equipment comes, we're gonna take a day and do that, we're gonna go out and patch potholes.
Orange jumpsuits?
It's coming, it's all over.
Maybe beige, it hides, it hides the tar better, you know?
I think orange suits would be appropriate.
Any board, any, any, any member of the board should be able to, can and should avail themselves to be able to take part, I know you've spent, I've spent time in town clerk, you have, you've spent time at the firehouse, the police station, D P W, it's great, and it, and it's great that they all let us do that.
Behind the bars don't count at the police station anyways, we're gonna continue.
I was young, I needed the money.
Dad.
Um, but I'm also thrilled that, that we can have such a jovial meeting, and the, one of the largest issues facing the town of Southwick is the number of tag sales that someone's having.
Page two.
And debris at the-
Debris at the transfer station.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm being a little facetious and a little not, that this is such a great town, we've got a lot of challenges in front of us, and we take them on headlong, but that we're able to divert time to spend on those, 'cause those are issues that people are concerned about.
Literally.
It's really, it really is a good thing, I'm not putting it into words the right way, but it really is a good thing.
And on Rock one oh two this morning, uh, you know, they had the gentleman running for the Westfield mayor yesterday and the other gentleman today, and John O'Brien said, why can't Westfield be more like Southwick? The roads are beautiful, they have great-
That's what I mean.
Good-looking buildings, you know, why can't you be more like Southwick?
What was the answer?
Uh, I, I was too busy laughing to actually hear the answer, but it was just-
No, it, it really is-
Literally, you know, they came out and said, Jesus.
No, I know, they're, they're minor things, but unfortunately-
It's the old broken window thing, I get it.
We're, we're down in the trenches, and we have, somebody has to address the issues, so-
I get it, and, and it, it's a thing, and, and I also found in, it's amazing to me, and it, it goes to value, people lose sight of value when you do something repetitively, right? So, in my job, I've watched guys wing twenty-five thousand dollar servers around like they were quarters, but you know what? When you touch thirty thousand of them a year, they lose their value. Same thing, guy builds a house, and you have to walk through your brand-new house and make a punch list that's three pages long, you just spent upwards of a quarter of a million dollars on a house, it should be bloody perfect, but the builder builds eight, ten of them a year, and that's just normal how it is, you just, you know, this corner's not right, eh, it's okay, we just pay, you lose sight of the value of the thing. So, it's the same thing with anything, you know, and so you, you have to constantly remind everyone of value, whether it's, you know, anything, don't, and it has more value to the person that's going to, to use it. So even, even at the transfer station, you know, the guy sees a piece of paper, but they're dealing with tons and tons of trash, so one little piece of paper's not a big deal, but it is to the person coming in and sees it on the ground, and the place looks like gas. So, you kinda have to go through and remind people, you know, I do it all the time at work, you know, hey guys, I know that that's just a server to you, but some customer is going to spend fifty thousand dollars on that piece of equipment, don't, don't scratch it, you know? If you go buy a new car, and it has a scratch in it, you'd be very upset, right? But the kid at the, in the lot that moves- But the kid at the, in the lot that moves the cars around, and he washing it and he scratches it, he just, bah, doesn't care, cause he touches a thousand cars a year. It's about the value. So you, you constantly have to remind people of what that value of that thing is. When you deal with a lot of them, you lose sight of it. And I think that's the same at DPW, it's the same with roads, it's the same with anything. So, um, I'd gladly go spend a day at the DPW, and, and, you know, and kind of remind them of that. And it, it's not, it's not a fault of the DPW, it's just, it's one of those things.
It's the business they're in.
So.
Yeah. So Russ, you want to go Monday or Tuesday? What do you think?
I go on Monday. Monday's a good day.
That'll give you time to weed whack and pick up stuff, you'll have no one bothering you, and you'll be fine.
And the first thing I'm gonna do is find out where the water is.
Right. And they have cameras now, so they'll tell you if you miss something. You know? Okay.
All right. Next thing is select board goals.
Yeah, it's in your folder, just, it's the latest version after we edited last time.
Okay. Everybody's happy?
Yep.
Okay. Board of Health position. You want to go into, uh, some of the discussions that we've had?
Yeah, at the last meeting, uh, the board had entrusted the chairperson and myself to identify different functions that we're gonna need to be addressed. And obviously, the advent of the new, uh, what, what you call almost OSHA, similar OSHA regs, but municipalities aren't really under OSHA regs, but the state did adopt very similar wording under a new state labor laws. So those issues, MSDSGs, right to know, uh, the need to coordinate training for the various departments that would fall under it.
Trench safety.
All, all these different issues. So that was the items that myself and Mr. Fox talked about, and I talked to the Board of Health representative about it. And so they've made amendments to the, um, job description. And they are going to be discussing them at their meeting on Thursday night, so that they, as a board, can adopt them. And then there'd be a prorated, uh, you know, the position would be in the sixty, sixty-four range, for thirty-seven and a half hours up from twenty-six. So that's gonna be finalized with them on Thursday night.
And where do we end up with the financing on that?
Uh, well, Russ conferred with both the.
Finance committee.
The Board of Health and the Finance Committee that there would be additional.
Right.
Funds needed during the course of the year, and that we would start to undertake this process so that we could get a pool of candidates.
Right.
Cause quite frankly, you met with them, you know, a good number of weeks ago, and they didn't get one candidate.
Right.
Because you were wanting to have people coming from other places for, uh, part-time hours or from other, sent from other.
Right.
Uh, municipalities under an agreement, nobody's got twenty-six hours to spare.
Right.
So that wasn't gonna work, and I know that's the same observations that you've had on your own research.
Oh, yeah.
So this is going to address those issues, and, uh, we're also going to address other needs that we have to take care of as an organization that have been placed upon us with new changes in law. Well said.
All right. So, do we need a motion from this board to authorize the reposting? Or an agreement with the Board of Health on the repost?
I think it's more of a concurrence with them, to go from a twenty-six to thirty-seven and a half hour week for the sixty to sixty-four, sixty-five range, uh, with the amended job description and duties.
Okay. So what?
As he said.
Second?
Concur, yeah, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. If you could.
Well, they still need to vote on it on Thursday night.
Right.
Although they have our blessing. Should they decide to go with it?
Uh, ward to town pending insurance and notification?
Issuance.
Issuance.
I think that, was that the rearrange thing?
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, we're gonna be going to that, yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I think it is, I called them up, and they, they said, we can't wait to see it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I messed up. So, I made my, I have an obligation that evening as well. So hopefully that used to can make it, if not, I will change my schedule.
What's the date?
Sixteenth.
The sixteen, it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday night.
Yeah, it should be all right.
Yeah, we're all set, we're booked.
Where we going?
We're booked.
Log cabin.
Oh, all right.
All right.
Oh, you going?
I think I do.
So.
You want to buy some tickets?
Joe, Joe and I are going. Okay. You have an excused.
Thank you. It's a, I'll be at a town thing, I just, I committed to something and.
That's fine.
Okay. I'd hate to go back.
We can't appoint you to anything at that, so you'll be fine, and there's nothing we can put you in charge of.
No, no, I can't be.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute. I'm going to the gun rage with the cops, and I don't want to be on the wrong end of that.
When's that date?
Wednesday the sixteenth.
Okay. Remind me about that. When's the sixteenth?
The Wednesday.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
I got a feeling they're gonna put a target on my back and give me a five second head start.
Oh, I think they already did.
All right. So, well, we were not gonna.
We're done with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, review and act on letters of interest to the Conservation Commission, and I think we got four. We, it's unbelievable. Normally, we either don't get anybody.
Awesome.
Or we get one person, and now we got four. We got Marissa Cook. How is Marissa spelled?
Obregon?
Obregon. Okay. We got Sabrina Poole. We got Scott Snyder. And how are we pronouncing that?
Peruzzi.
Peruzzi? 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 And John Tortorella. So, has everybody had a chance to read these over? Okay. Um, I read them over, and I was given quite a bit of thought. And, uh, I even had one of the applicants track me down to talk to me. Cause she was concerned that, um, because she's an associate on another volunteer board, that that would, uh, eliminate her from consideration. And during the discussion with her, you know, and I was very impressed with her. And I was very impressed because she felt strongly that the agricultural community needed a presence on the Conservation Board. And, and it's funny, because that was my thinking even before meeting her, that I, when I looked at the board, we're an agricultural community, yet we didn't have any representation on the Conservation Commission. So, and then she started telling me about some of her ideas and thoughts about promoting agriculture and, and the right to farm, and the fact that she understood that, and was a big supporter of that. You know, and I thought back, and I'm not saying it was this particular, uh, Conservation Commission, but some.
Past.
Past, where there have been issues involving farming and their practices, where the Department of Agriculture for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts had to get involved to say, wait a minute, these are agricultural practices.
Yep.
And they're allowed.
Yep.
And yet these individuals that are working seven days a week.
Yep.
Uh, working hard as a farmer, had to take a lot of time to defend their agricultural processes. So, I, I think we got a, a great pool of candidates here, I think we have four good candidates. Uh, but I, I, I would feel very comfortable with, uh, Marissa, because, uh, I'm very impressed after having my conversation with her.
I'll make a motion for her.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And send the other ones.
Hold on to the other ones, cause you never know.
Right. Well, thank you, and that, uh, we had four applicants, and unfortunately, we can only appoint one, but if they're still interested, who knows?
There could be people leaving.
Right. Um, okay.
All right.
All right, so we've taken care of that. Uh, reappointment of the Sewer Implementation Committee. I need a motion to reappoint Fredo Brown, Randy Brown, uh, Jerry, uh, Petra, Art Pennell, and Brian Pranka.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's done. All right. Uh, I had two things under old business, uh, first, uh.
Excuse me. There was two people, if you look for appointments.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up, it's okay. Uh.
For the two-fiftieth?
No. Well, that too.
Yeah, there's the two-fiftieth.
Okay, that'd be under new business.
Okay.
Okay?
Under old business, go, you go first.
Under old business, I had two things. First, uh, uh, I wanted to thank the board for, uh, letting Better Angels hold their event here, uh, last night, and thank the staff.
Was it?
It was very well attended.
That's great.
We had Senator Humison here, and the Westfield representative, Representative, uh, Bielsa. And, uh, but our staff, extremely impressive, setting up everything, taking things down, even, uh, uh, taking care of communications. And the other thing I had is, I, I saw the email, and I think a lot of people probably did see the, um, email concerning the old cemetery, and the fact that they're gonna be having a training in October, uh, down there. I believe it's the, uh, October ninth and tenth, which is next week, it's during the day. And I know the Cemetery Commissioners are in charge, but I think if we're gonna get volunteers, we need to start promoting this. So I'd like to see if we couldn't reach out to the Cemetery Commissioners to see if we can assist them in publicizing this, to get volunteers there, because it's gonna be during the day, and so that's gonna be very difficult.
And what is that for, is treatment of the stones?
Yeah, they, the.
Cleaning and how to do it.
Individual that, um, that is the expert on that would be giving training.
Ninth and tenth?
I believe it's the ninth and tenth.
It's Wednesday and Thursday.
Right.
Yeah, wow.
Um.
During the day?
And I believe it's during the day.
What time is that, Russ, did they?
I think it's all, all day, you know? Um.
Well, I'll have to check with the, the chairperson of this, you know.
Right. I mean, I just saw the email this afternoon, so I don't know if I was the only one copied on it.
I didn't get any.
Okay. Uh, but I think we need, need to promote that. Uh, I mean, I know we're trying to, uh, we got a great guy in Gene Theroux who's, uh, taken upon himself to do a lot of the work, but, uh, this only gives us a few days to get volunteers together for that.
Yeah.
All right, those are the two things I had under old business. Doug, what did you have?
Uh, we had a first meeting of the inter, internet, High Speed Internet Committee, and, um, there were two people that were at the introductory meeting that somehow did not get invited to this meeting nor appointed to the said committee. So I'd like to add those two names back in and reach back out to them to get them appointed, and then sworn in to be on this committee. It's Marlene Quinlan and Jim Johnson.
Make that form of a motion?
I am.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So you're going from five to seven?
Five to seven.
Yep.
The, uh, young lady who did the secretarial work did an excellent job. She seems very nice.
Anything else, Doug?
Uh, I have a quick question for Fred.
Yes.
Fred, and is a public records request in and of itself a public record?
Is a public records request a public record? I, it wouldn't be confidential.
Okay.
Mr. Diddy, anything, old business?
The only thing I have, um, and I don't think I even have it, is, um, I've been getting a lot of discussion over, and I know we've been down this road, I get it, between Wally Park and, and Park and Rec, and, and Rec Center, and, and baseball, and practices, and we can't use the fields, we can use the fields, and, and I, and I know we've been down this road, I get that, but now there's newer, must be newer parents involved in sports, and aye, 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 they're, they're, they're coming at us, coming at me pretty strong in regards to, they just don't understand. And quite frankly, I don't really understand. I know when we took Wally Park over, and I, and I understand the, the packet that we all signed up for, and I get all that. So, I think, not today, but I think we're gonna see them probably come in front of us. And I didn't suggest it, they thought they were gonna be at our last meeting and asked how it went, and I said, these don't want to front of us. So, we're probably gonna have to look at that again, and maybe in a different light, I, I don't know. You know, I explained to them that, you know, the, the Rec Center isn't the town's.
Right.
You know, it's a nonprofit, they do what they can do, and they really don't even have all the, the rights to Wally Park per se. That was all discussed at the beginning with rose petals and everything, and it kind of just, everything kind of just went its own way, good or bad or, or not.
Right.
So I said, you guys use it a little bit, or I think you did, and I think the school uses it a little bit, but I think they don't. So, there's just, there's, there's this little brewery, there's something brewing there, and I don't know when it's gonna come in front of us, but.
Is it gonna go to the Park and Rec, cause they're the.
I, yeah, and I kind of said that, you know, and I think they've been kind of the Park and Rec, and I don't think they like what they're hearing. Not that we have the answers, of course, but, um, I don't know where it's going, just.
Yeah.
It's, it's out there, and I know it's cause of the soccer season or something has happened where there's a lot of little, little teams too. It's not high school kids, it sounds like it's the little tykes. You know, and that bottom field's not being used at Wally Park per se, and why can't we just set up and do little scrimmage practices, and and I, and I know nothing.
Yeah.
You know?
And when people have talked to me, I, I basically told them that they really need to go to the Park and Rec Commissioners. They're elected officials.
Yep.
They control the park.
Yeah.
And, and they need to be vocal and go there. Because, you know, like.
That's where it starts, right?
People come, come to me, and they said, wait a minute, we're taxpayers. It's a public park.
Right.
And, but you're telling me my kids can't practice there. But it's a public park.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I, I, it's, it's, it's very difficult. And, uh, I, on the other hand, I, the Park and Rec Commissioners have said, well, we, we need to charge to.
Yep, understood.
To cover costs and things like that, but there's this fine line.
Yeah.
That, that I don't know if anybody has a, a good answer to, uh, but, but people really should talk, talk to the Park and Rec Commissioners.
Yeah.
They, they're the ones making this decision.
Right, right.
And we can't tell them what to do.
Cause they're an elected body.
They're an elected body.
Okay.
So.
I'll bring that up. I think I brought up, that's where they need to go.
Oh, it's, 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 I get phone calls all the time, you know, and it's, you know, it's frustrating, because I, I know at the Rec Center, frustrating, because I, I know at the Rec Center, because I'm on the board directly, that these coaches are, are volunteers, and they're parents.
Right.
And they're, they're just trying to help kids.
Yeah.
And they're just looking for a little place to.
Yep, and that's what I'm hearing, right.
Kick a ball around or hit a ball.
They're astounded that, that they can't even, you know, and I don't have an answer, I'm just smiling going, I guess I'm aware of it, but, you know.
We've helped out groups back here at Perky Park, Cindy and myself and Kara.
Well, I think they're.
Make sure that everybody.
And that's what they're doing, but I think they're just like, why can't we use?
Go to the bigger park.
You know, our taxes pay for that park, correct? Of course they do.
Well, we.
You know, and, and, you know, we all.
We used to practice kids, when I helped John King coach and stuff like that, we'd be out in the field, a, a, a piece of land at the school.
Right.
You know, we didn't have a field or lines or anything.
We didn't have Wally Park back then, right?
You know, that's what, what you did, you know, and, uh.
I think part of it is the schools started limiting.
Yeah.
Rotating fields and resting them.
Right.
So, that pushed people.
So, so did.
Pushed people into the other.
So, then the Rec Center.
Right.
You know, had to.
Which has a very good soccer field.
Right, had to start resting the field, because.
Overuse.
Overuse, because some of the other entities weren't allowing people to, uh.
Well, other locations, I mean, some of the other communities' fields didn't compare to the Rec Center.
No, no.
Right.
But it's, but, but I feel for them, I really do feel for them, because, you know, if I was a taxpayer and I'm going down there to a public park, and somebody said, no, you can't do that, you know, well, if the field isn't being used, I can understand.
And I think that's where they were coming from, is it's not.
If the field isn't rented out.
It's not booked.
It's not booked.
How can you?
Tell them no.
It's free play, it's what we call free play.
Right, well, it's, it's just like.
We all did it growing up.
The softball.
Decades ago.
Softball teams, you know, I, I laughed one day, I said, what are you guys doing? Well, we're going rogue, what, what do you mean you're going rogue? We just find a field and we start playing.
Right, till someone throws you out.
So, somebody throws us out, you know, but that's.
Yeah.
But we did that as kids, right, but, I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
When I was a kid, you had to yell, car, get behind the wall.
Well, that's 'cause you were a city slicker.
I was just saying.
Mr. Steinhardt, any Old Business?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive six RFP submissions for the fire station work for the masonry and the roof repairs, so myself and the, uh, Fire Chief and some others are gonna get together tomorrow with Erica Johnson from the Regional Planning Agency, who's, you know, of course, is on the contract to help us out, and we're gonna be reviewing those, uh, documents, and then that's going to probably lead us to bring in several firms for initiative.
All right.
Um, and then, in addition to that, uh, in terms of our follow-up on our lightning strike in early August, we have signed off on agreements for both the, um, fire alarm system and the generator, uh, non-seater panels, replacements for town hall, that's all in motion, the, um, pre-construction meeting happened today, it's, uh, project's underway,